Started. To all of the candidates, you will have two minutes to answer the question. I do have a nice little timer right here. It will go off and I will mute you. So just please be aware of that. And everyone is going to have two minutes to introduce themselves while they're running for city council. We will then move into another question. You will have two minutes to answer that. And after that, closing remarks for two minutes and then we will be done. Again, everybody is on mute now. Please remember to unmute. When it is your turn. Again, if you could put your information in the chat box so that people can see this. You will also be receiving personally, I believe Lauren Fisher is going to be doing a 10 second warning for when your time is up.
In the chat box.
In the chat box, yes. And I am going to go and introduce the candidates quickly. This is in no particular order. It is literally how I wrote down from my email stream. I do have the current city council candidates or current council members, Amy Jackson, John Taylor Chapman, Kanek Agwire. I have newcomers to the race, Aliyah Gaskins, James Lewis, Sarah Bagley, Kevin Harris, Bill Rosello, Kirk McPike, Patrick Moran, Marone Teklu, William Bill Campbell and Mark Schiffer, who could not be here, but his wife Nadia is here filling in for him. If I missed anyone, please let me know. And if I butchered someone's name, I greatly apologize. I tried to watch any YouTube video or anything that showed me how to pronounce people's names, but I apologize if I got them wrong. And we are going to get started. I'll start with the current city council members. Again, this is in no particular order. Amy Jackson, if you would like to give your two minute elevator speech on who you are and why you think you are the best candidate to be voted in for council?
Sure, Heidi. Thank you. And thank you to Delray Business Association for having us today. I really appreciate it. I'm a hometown girl, Amy Jackson. I'm serving my first term right now and reelection is coming up for my second, so I hope you vote for me. I need your vote. June 8th. So I grew up in the West End, Fox Chase, single mom. She, my mother's a single mother. And, and went to Patrick Henry Hammond and TC and then I went on to Virginia Tech and Communications and I have two master's degrees in education and teaching and social studies curriculum as well as school administration. And I am running again because I want to help our city with its COVID-19 recovery. Our city is resilient and we are amazing, but I'm hoping to deal with our infrastructure and our broadband and, and thank you very much. Is that the two minutes? Thank you.
Technically you have one minute left, but.
Oh, I heard the timer. I'm sorry. I did. Okay, so I'll keep talking. So our, our infrastructure, our broadband, of course, we have stormwater issues in Delray and Rosemont that we need to concentrate on. We have the American Rescue Plan funding that's coming in. Almost $60 million. And of course, our survey just ended May 13th with the community to hopefully get some input as to where that money is most needed. Of course, we want Virginia and Alexandria especially to be a great place to live, work and play. And so I want to continue to keep that resilient Alexandria continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have John Taylor Chapman.
Hey, everybody. I am going to switch on my camera and as you can see, I'm hunkered down here at work. And so I apologize that you can't see me with all the fun stuff in the background. I think Room Raider would give me a zero, but I'm John Taylor Chapman. I've been on city council for three terms. I'm running for a fourth. I am hoping to continue my service. I started on council in 2012 and before that I was a regular citizen. I'm a fourth generation Alexandrian, very interested and deep rooted in this community. My big issues on council have been education, economic development, as well as affordability of housing. I am very interested in continuing that service because as my colleague said, we are coming out of this pandemic. And we've learned a lot throughout the pandemic that we are going to need experience on council in order to get us not only to back to where we were pre pandemic, but also take advantage of opportunities and lessons learned during the pandemic to push our community further. One of the things I want to do is, I think, and I think this would be appropriate for this particular body is that we had a number of years ago, back in 2010, we had a Economic Sustainability Work Group that talked about the future of economic development and business development here in the city. And it's been a while since 2010. And so it's time to reconvene that group and a lot has changed. And so we get to see the new landscape of the city post pandemic and also start to figure out our future here in Alexandria for businesses and residents as well. Also with what I'm interested in, of course, continuing to see how we can seek affordability, not only of, of housing, but also of businesses too. As most of you businesses can tell us, your rents have gone up. And we want to make sure that small business still has a future in the city. Our great history of this city has meant that small business has thrived here in various areas in the city and we need to make sure that's into the future as well. Thanks.
Fantastic. Thank you. Kanek Agwire, you are next.
So I joked at a, at a previous forum that part of the reason that I'm running again is to help people pronounce my, my name in my second term, hopefully, but it's a gear. If you can't pronounce, if you can't roll your Rs and it's a gear red. No, no offense taken though, this part of riot, part of the reason why we ran on my first name to begin with, because it was going to be a lot easier for people to pronounce. But again, thank you so much to the Delray Business Association for putting this together. Happy to be here again and I'm hoping to garner your support come June 8th for my reelection to city council. For those of you that don't know me, I'm originally from Los Angeles. Both my parents immigrated here from Mexico and I graduated from UNC Chapel Hill. I dropped anchor in the Port City in 2011 and began what is now almost a decade of service to Alexandria residents. I started off serving three years with Alexandria City Public Schools where I had the opportunity to explore and learn the different neighborhoods in our community and work with a variety of nonprofits and city agencies. One of my biggest strengths and what I really help contribute to city council is bridging that disconnect between policymakers and what is happening on the ground. This was especially useful for two major events in my first term, the census and our COVID response. I successfully led the city's 2020 census efforts to achieve 100% count securing millions of dollars. One more time, millions of dollars for our roads, schools, businesses and families. And this is for the next decade. So also during the pandemic, I made sure that our limited resources were placed where they were needed most. And this pandemic also showed us just how important local government is. This is why Alexandria needs proven leadership to guide us through an equitable recovery and to make meaningful investments in our infrastructure future, particularly our schools, our stormwater and sanitary sewers and our roads. To learn more about my campaign, you can visit kanekforcouncil.com or check out my social media at Kanek for Council. Made that super easy for everyone. But again, hope you're in your vote between now, since early voting has already started and June 8th. So thank you again.
Kanek, thank you so much. You literally hit the nail on the head with the timer and I apologize for the name. I get it. My name is Hillary. People mess that up. My last name's Reideman. They messed that up. It's totally. I'm right there with you. It's, it's not easy. Alrighty, next up we have Aliyah Gaskins.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Aliyah Gaskins and I'm excited to be here with you. I was raised by a single, hardworking mom who despite her working two, sometimes three jobs, we often struggled to make ends meet. And it's our early experiences with hunger and housing instability that led me to pursue a career of serving others. And so I've spent the past decade as a public health professional and urban planner, working with communities across the country on helping them take action to be healthier and more equitable. When I was at the National League of Cities, working with mayors and local electeds, I had the opportunity to work with the US Chamber of Commerce on their Health Means Business Campaign. Think the reality is now more than ever, health means business as we work to figure out how to protect our business owners, their employees, as well as our customers. I also have served on the Alexandria Chambers Government Relations Committee for the past several years, working to fight for changes at the local, state and federal level to better support our businesses. I work by day at a national foundation focused on ending homelessness. I also own my own consulting business. And so this past year has meant a lot of adjusting and adapting and figuring out how to make my business work as well. And so I'm running to bring what I believe is a missing public health perspective to our council. I'm also running to bring that entrepreneurial spirit and new ideas to our council as we navigate some of our most pressing challenges from the COVID-19 recovery to climate change. I'm also running to make sure that we invest in our infrastructure from stormwater to sidewalks to broadband and housing. And I'm running to make sure that we do so with an intentional focus on equity and bringing more voices, especially your voices to the table. For me, I'm excited about this opportunity. I have a whole platform mapped out on my website on my ideas for small businesses. I won't have enough time to go into them right now, but something I am excited about sharing is when I look at Delray and I look at the pandemic and how many of us have been impacted physically, mentally and socially, I think we have a great opportunity to really amplify the benefits of our wellness district and getting more people out and experiencing that. You can learn more about me on my website, which is www.aleiaforalexandria.com. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And next is James Lewis.
Hi, I'm James Lewis and thank you all so much for having us today. I'm, I'm running for city council because I moved to Alexandria because it reminded me of the area I grew up in, a place where people took care of each other. We believed government worked for good and that we supported our local businesses because they were there for us and we were there for them. Part of the reason I'm running is to make sure that all voices are heard so the best and brightest ideas move forward. For the last 10 years that I've been in the area, I've worked in PR, including six years on Capitol Hill, supporting two members of the Congressional Black Caucus. My job was to reach people who normally weren't heard from, to bring their ideas to the table so that they could participate in government. We could use their lived experience to craft better legislation to move us forward. I'm really proud of the work we did largely focused on not just a partisan agenda, but finding win-win wins so that everyone could benefit from the policies and we could actually get things done. More locally in the city, I've been on the traffic and parking board for the last seven and a half years, working to do the same thing, balance the needs of businesses, local, local communities, as well as the people coming into our community to patronize our businesses. We have to balance all of those issues and parking is a critical part of that. Transportation is a critical part of that. How we get people to and from locations. And now we're seeing it's also an issue of how we get water and sewage to and from locations. So part of the reason I'm running and think that I would be a good voice on council is I have the experience actually working with the community to solve infrastructure problems, whether it's stop signs and curb cuts or loading zones or handicap parking, all the way through the parking ratio study, which made it easier for businesses to get open in our city because we got rid of parking requirements that were preventing a lot of restaurants, particularly restaurants and retail from getting started here. COVID-19 has created no shortage of challenges for our city, but we have a distinct advantage that a lot of other communities don't. Our people here. What we need to make sure that is happening is that we're creating a system and an ecosystem within our city. So the best ideas and the people who want to be engaged can move forward to help us solve all of our problems, whether it's in the business sector or whether it's flooding. By bringing more people and voices to the table, that's how we'll move forward.
Thank you, James. Sarah Bagley.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. I'm happy to be here. My name is Sarah Bagley. I'm a first time candidate for office and I have chosen to enter this race at this time because I believe my personal and professional background demonstrates my commitment to public service and my desire to serve the citizens of Alexandria. I'm originally from Virginia Beach, Virginia. I was raised by a former Marine and a woman, my mother graduated from Old Dominion University when I was in elementary school. And those lessons were powerful ones about service and education. I went to the College of William and Mary and then I moved to Mobile, Virginia, the DC area to go to law school. I practiced law for about 10 years. I'm still a trial lawyer by training and nature. And six years ago, I made a very important personal decision to begin working for an affordable housing nonprofit. In that role, I build social service programs for people who live in low income housing communities and those communities are all around the country. So I've developed valuable experience working with Somali, Nepali and Budanese refugees in Fargo, North Dakota, with Hispanic communities in the Rio Grande Valley and with urban communities in Atlanta. And I want to bring all those experiences, including having been a landlord of 1,500 units during the pandemic to our COVID recovery here in Alexandria. I saw both sides of that issue, both being a landlord and having all those residents and also being on the social services side and seeing what went into it, what we needed to do and how we needed to reach people on the ground. Alexandria shares all those issues. And so I want to bring that experience in both housing and housing affordability, but also in social services and civic engagement to the table. I moved to Alexandria five years ago and I got to know this city door by door. I immediately joined the Alexandria Democratic Committee. I became a precinct captain and I've knocked thousands of doors, listening to the Alexandrians talk about all the things they're passionate about. I also joined Moms Demand Action, which is a gun violence prevention organization where I was the local event lead for two years. That work is deeply important to me and I think it's part of the ongoing conversation about safety and equity in Alexandria. We can do so much to improve the safety and security of our citizens. We can talk about mental health and we can fund programming that helps reduce violence in our communities. These experience, I think, all bring valuable insight into the challenges facing Alexandria moving forward. I'm sorry, Lauren, was that my 10 seconds?
Yep.
Okay, thank you all.
Kevin Harris, your turn. He was. Kevin, if you're here, you're muted. Maybe you're not here. Okay, he was here. He hops back on. I will let him speak. Bill Rosello, you are next. Bill, if you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks Hillary. First, for those of you who don't know me, I was born in Baltimore. I attended the public schools there, graduated from Duke and then worked my way through business school at William and Mary as a waiter. My wife Bonnie and I have lived here since we were married 32 years ago. We raised our two sons here and they both attended the Alexandria Public Schools. And we lived two blocks from Delray for 13 years, so we certainly know the neighborhood. My business experience is by far the most extensive of the candidates. I've spent 35 years as a management consultant, business executive, and now business owner. I've advised companies of all sizes, including some of the largest in the country, companies like Coca-Cola, McDonald's, AT&amp;T and JP Morgan Chase. Perhaps most importantly, I bring to council experience working and consulting to 24 local governments and school districts around the country on issues of management, budget and operations. And because of that, I already know how city government and school districts are supposed to work. And I've been engaged in community activities for three decades. Most notably, I spent seven years as the chambers rep to the city's budget committee. And I currently serve on several other city and civic boards. Let me tell you why I'm running. We live in a unique and very special place here in Alexandria, but we can make it even better. Here are some ways. First, and it starts with this, we need to restore integrity, transparency and accountability in city hall. So residents aren't surprised, surprised by unforeseen flooding or taken aback by unpopular proposals. We need to promote responsible development that's more mindful of infrastructure pressures, that helps meet the workforce needs of our restaurants and shops and that focuses more on economic development that relieves tax burdens on our small businesses and residents alike. And we need to accelerate school construction, get traffic moving again and live our eco-city pledge once and for all. That's it. Thanks. I look forward to your questions.
Thanks, Bill. You came in right on time. Kirk McPike, it is your turn.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here today. I first came to Alexandria about a little over 10 years ago to run Adam Evans campaign for the Virginia Senate. And just a few weeks after arriving here, I fell in love with this city. It's beautiful neighborhoods, it's wonderful stores, it's historic character. And I'm running for city council because I believe that Alexandria's future can be even brighter than it's present. But to achieve a brighter future, we need to live our progressive values and get past the obstacles that lay directly before us. My husband Jason and I live on the west end of the city, but my second apartment in Alexandria was at the Reserve Apartments just by Delray, across from Potomac Yard. And I used to walk into Delray very regularly to get lunch, to shop. I, I am a member of Grace Episcopal Church just around the corner on Russell Road. And I love the Delray neighborhood and I'm really thrilled to have the opportunity to speak to you today. In my professional life, I am chief of staff, a member of Congress on Capitol Hill. Here in Alexandria, I've served as a member and chair of the Economic Opportunities Commission and I'm presently on the city's Budget Advisory Committee. And I'm running for city council to take the legislative skills I have learned on Capitol Hill and my knowledge and commitment to this city's needs and its values and put those to work for you on the city council. When the new council meets next January, the virus will hopefully be in the past, but the effects of this pandemic will still be with us. So our next council needs to be ready to hit the ground running to address the lingering effects of the pandemic on our businesses, on our families and our schools. And use that recovery as a way to make our city even better than it was by addressing long-term issues like the flooding that affects too many businesses and families in Delray. I'm really looking forward to the question that we're getting, questions we're going to get here today. I hope that you'll check out my website, KirkMcPike.com, that we can continue to speak even after this forum, but thank you very much for having me here today.
Thank you, Kirk. Patrick Moran.
Hillary, fabulous. And Delaware Business Association, Lauren and Gail, I appreciate all of you taking the time. My name is Patrick Moran. I'm running for Alexandria City Council and Delray is from where, where I come. I grew up off of Russell Road on West Eeler Terrace. I would ride my bike down Mount Ida. I would shop at the old comic book store and that was there on Mount Vernon. This was, these were the stomping grounds, so to say, before stomping ground was a thing. But I'm running because I was catalyzed to get involved with this race because of flooding. Because I promised my mother that I wouldn't close the door on public service. I saw an opportunity to help. And now in entering this race, I realized that our perspective that we bring is critically important. I'm a small business owner. Small business owner that has employees, 10 of them. And that means meeting payroll every week. That means making the tough decisions. And ultimately sacrificing to ensure that you've got a team that can count on you to make the smart decisions and to grow. It has been fabulous. The pandemic has been tough, as I know it's been tough for everybody. I'd love to see Alexandria city staff and the city in general to continue to work as a partner to provide a lot of the information and the services that can help our businesses. Cause at the end of the day, what makes Alexandria so special, in addition to its vibrant neighborhoods, is it's small businesses that care compassionately about our community injecting that vibrancy that makes it so special. I think there's a lot of opportunities we have to work elaborately. I'd love to see us do a better job of workforce development. I'd love to see more work-study programs. I'd love to do things constructively that are win-win scenarios so that our restaurants and our bars that have been hammered, as well as our other small businesses, get staff and that's something that we've struggled with. I know it's something that you all have too. And I look forward to having a great partnership in that.
Thank you. Marone Teklu, and I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
Thank you. I, Marone is perfectly okay. In Amharic, that's Meron, but for purposes of today, I will introduce myself as Marone. Thank you for the Delray Business Association for hosting this forum and providing us an opportunity to chat more with you about our visions for Alexandria. As mentioned, my name is Marone Teklu. I'm running for Alexandria City Council and I'm the daughter of immigrants and a product of local public schools. I was born here in Alexandria, raised in Northern Virginia and I currently live in the West End. My story really starts with my parents. They came from Ethiopia, settled here in Alexandria, seeking better opportunities and in pursuit of the American dream. They instilled in me the importance of hard work, education and giving back to our community. As a student, I was always involved in student government and leadership, whether it was serving as middle school treasurer, Student Human Rights Commission, senior class officer, or organizing for Black Lives Matter. I'm also a proud graduate as a few other candidates of the College of William and Mary. In the community, I've served as an advisory board member for the Wagon Ethiopian Foundation, which is a nonprofit whose motto is to rebuild families one child at a time. I've also served as a community manager for the IA councils on higher education where I supported, mentored and guided students of first generation and immigrant backgrounds through the college admissions process. Professionally, I work as a technology management consultant for a large professional services firm here in Northern Virginia, where I solve complex problems for a variety of clients, including Fortune 500 companies and impacting millions of customers. I'm running for Alexandria City Council to amplify and elevate the voices of Alexandria's marginalized and underserved communities. I believe that I'll bring a fresh data-driven, well, people-centered perspective to our council to help drive change forward in our city. I'll work in partnership with our residents, small businesses and community organizations when it comes to implementing change and innovation around implementing equity, modernizing our infrastructure, justice, sustainability and COVID-19 relief. In closing, we are at a time where we have such opportunity to reimagine life after this pandemic and I'm fighting for a livable Alexandria. I'm excited to help bring positive change and innovation to our city and I hope to earn your support for the June 8th Democratic primary. To learn more about my vision, please visit our website, www.maronforcouncil.com and I thank you for your time.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, Bill Campbell.
Hey, thank you. I really wish we could have more forums like this for our citizens to get to know the candidates. So this is, this is great. My name is Bill Campbell and I'm running based on my life experience, my experience and my knowledge of Alexandria city, my focus on equity and my desire to keep moving this city toward excellence. I've been married for 37 years. I now have three adult children. I have a college graduate. I have a senior at Old Dominion. And my youngest boy, who we fostered and adopted when he was six years old, he played college basketball and he's now in the workforce. I am a mechanical engineer by training. I also have a master's certificate from Georgetown in paralegal studies. I spent 33 years with the Department of Defense, working on a multi-billion dollar modernization effort that allowed me to travel all over the world, live in seven different states and, and meet numerous people and interact with lots and lots of businesses. I'm probably approaching the record in terms of a citizen servant on boards and commissions in the city. I've been fortunate to have been elected and served six years on Alexandria City Public School Boards. There, our focus, of course, was on achievement and capacity and our, our infrastructure and also working hard to improve our relationship with the city council. Both Ruby and I are fortunate now to be retired. We've decided to remain in Alexandria, so we hope to be here another 40 years or so. I am currently serving on the Commission for Aging where we advocate and focus on the services provided to retire citizens and our, and our, our older citizens that, that are aging. And so we want to continue serving this city and I, I encourage everyone to look at folks' website and I, I, I hope that I can earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And last but not least, we have Nadia Schiffer, who is speaking on behalf of her husband, Mark.
Yes. Hello, what a wonderful opportunity to spend my lunch break with, with the candidates. Thank you for, for organizing. Mark sends his regards that he cannot be here and I have a few notes that he wants to pass on to you. Mark is running for Alexandria City Council. This is his second attempt. And he does it because of his personal and professional experience gives him the right perspectives and skills to, to address many issues that are facing the city and I, I'm a NASA scientist and work with NASA scientists and engineers and I have to tell you, Mark is the smartest people that I know. So you should be in good hands in terms of an executive who could make a smart decision based on information that is available. Just like a few of you guys, he also comes from a struggling childhood, single mom and overcame a lot of challenges. He was the first in the family to graduate college, began his career teaching computer science. We co-founded a climate science nonprofit together. We also run a successful real estate business. And now he works as a tech executive. And so making decisions and solving complex issues with diverse and competent teams is what he does for a living. In terms of issues, and by the way, you can learn more about it at markschiffer.info, but he highlighted infrastructure, flooding in Delray caused by a combination of global warming, underfunded and poorly maintained infrastructure that needs to be addressed. Another priority for Mark is education and affordable housing. He wants to fund Universal PK and work towards affordable housing. Businesses, local businesses, long paragraph. I don't know if I have time to read it all.
No, you don't, but we are going to have another question that hopefully you'll be able to address. No, you don't, but we are going to have another question that hopefully you'll be able to address.
Right, exactly. Okay, so and then transportation, educational opportunities and participation and decision-making and governments for undeserved and underrepresented communities is also one of the notes that he provided. I'm not sure I should take any questions, so how about you guys visit his website, markschiffer.info for more information.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Nadia.
No problem.
And this is going to be, we have a little bit of fun, hopefully attached to this, but in addition to the question that I'm going to ask, when you answer, I would like you to tell me your favorite Delray business. So think about it before you answer your question. We don't need to know why. We don't need to know when, just what's your favorite business? And then you can answer this question, which is, what will be your first priority to help Delray businesses, to help small businesses in Delray if you are elected to city council? So I want to know what your priority is for Delray businesses and then I want to know what your favorite Delray business is. You will each have two minutes and I'm going to start in the order that we just finished. So Amy Jackson, what is your Delray favorite Delray business and your first priority?
Sorry, I didn't. Okay, so I can't choose a favorite. It's difficult, but I can tell you that our family loves Mexican food and we go to Los Tios a lot and I like the beverages there, so we'll just leave it. Now, when it comes to, to Delray and all the businesses, you know, Delray is, well Alexandria is, is filled with all these unique neighborhoods, right? And Delray, I know when I was growing up, I wasn't allowed in Delray. It's changed that much that it was not the place to go in the, in the mid to late eighties when I was growing up and driving around and all that jazz with, you know, as Pat pointed out, the stomping ground part. However, as Delray has matured and everyone is out and about, Delray has been a place to go because of the First Thursdays and the Halloween parade and the families and the kids that are down there. And so we need to continue to make sure that everyone is out and about. And I think that a lot of it has to do with what we've seen with our strengths and weaknesses being highlighted here during COVID. You know, our curbside to go, the, the being able to buy alcohol and take it home, you know, things like that are things that we need to continue because obviously those are the things that have helped a lot of our restaurants and businesses continue because when people go down there to get the curbside food and the alcohol and, you know, hopefully socially distancing. It also makes them window shop. It makes them go and walk around and socialize, but also see what else do I need down there? So it is a walkable, livable environment down there and that's what we need to continue in that trend. I mean, just it's and, you know, shout out honestly to Mary Wadlin of the Zebra for creating that curbside dining-to-go social media blast that she did with over 10,000 followers now. That's amazing stuff and I know a lot of it has helped Delray as well as the rest of Alexandria. So thank you.
Thank you, Amy. John Taylor Chapman, what is your favorite Delray business and what is your first priority in helping small businesses in Delray?
Like Amy said, this is a little bit of an unfair question. So I'm gonna have some people mad at me after this, but it's okay. It's okay. Well, I get it. I can't lie. I love barbecue and I love pork barrel barbecue. I'm, I'm in there a lot, especially when I come to Delray. I find a way to sneak in there, even though I might not have any business to be there, just to sit there, dine and, and really see folks coming in and out of the restaurant. There's just a particular vibe there that I really appreciate. And I would say this, you know, that's reflective of a number of restaurants in Delray and the community that is there. I'll say for, for my first, and I'm going to kind of cheat on this question as well, for my first priority, with the federal dollars coming, coming down this year, I think my focus is going to be around business grants and making sure that money is spread as far as we can to local businesses that have really taken the hit throughout the pandemic. We know they need those federal funds to sustain their business. I'm a, I have a tour business. I didn't mention that in my opening, but I have a tour business and we've seen the tour, tourism industry gutted. And so being able to help businesses kind of pick themselves up after this by some of that, that direct funding, I think is going to be essential. As I highlighted in my, my opening, I do think not only do we need the short-term focus and efforts, we do need a long-term focus. Coming out of this pandemic, we are going to be fighting and competing with all these other jurisdictions that are going to be trying to get back on top and recover from the pandemic. And so really setting our sights on what does Delray look like over the next 10, 15, 25 years and how do we make that happen? We've done a good job in the past and planning for what our communities need to, community businesses need to look like in our economic sustainability. But we stopped short in the near future, no, excuse me, in the last few years of really resetting that path. So it's time to do that so that all of our businesses not only have short-term support, but long-term support as well.
Thank you, John. Kianek?
I'm with my colleagues. You know, I lived in Delray for seven years and, oh man, I love the macaroons at Dulce. I love the fish tacos at Kaizen. Thai dumplings are my favorite things. A Thai pepper, like I love the sausage at Pork Barrel. You know, gotta have some ice cream from Dairy Godmother, cheese tea, the Mexican nachos at at Stomping Ground. I, you know, we get bowls from, what is it, right, right next to the yoga spot? I'm blanking on the name right now, but oh man, there's, because I'm a huge foodie, so that's like, that's almost an impossible decision for me unless you try and say like, oh, what's a specific type of food that you like eating in Delray or something?
Yeah, I didn't say it would be fair.
Yeah, definitely, but definitely shout out to all the businesses in Delray. I, I, you know, even though I live on the West End now, I go back there all the time, whether it's for breakfast, lunch or dinner. My wife and I still love going there, whether it's to grab food or walk around. But more, more poignantly to, to the second part of the question in terms of support for our small businesses, I think number one is continuing good policies that we have been able to extend during the pandemic, whether it's, you know, beverages to go, alcoholic beverages to go, having outside dining and some of the parking spaces, expanding where seating can be located. I think all of that is very important and I think that has been very popular. So how we can continue to support that. And additionally, of course, you know, we're going to be getting more money from the American Rescue Plan. So we have to make sure that we're targeting that towards our businesses as well. So I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity for us to be able to support our businesses and looking forward to actually, you know, stopping by sometime when it's not a forum, hearing what suggestions you guys have as an association to see how we can support all of you the best that we can.
Fantastic. Thank you. Aliyah Gaskins, what is your favorite Delray business and what will be your priority in helping Delray businesses if you are elected to city council?
Okay, so if you're asking me, my favorite Delray business is Mind the Mat. Mommy and Me Yoga has been a life send for me throughout this pandemic, but I have to give a shout out to my dog who has been turning up at yappy hour the past couple of weekends at the dog store. So I guess if family was voting, that would probably be the number one business we've been going to recently. And what I would say in terms of my top priority to support Delray businesses, you know, I've been really thinking about what do you think of when you think of Delray in our business community? And the thing that comes to mind is obviously the experience, even what you just heard from the past few candidates, whether we're talking about the restaurants or Art on the Avenue or the upcoming Well Ray. It's really about this opportunity to come and linger and experience and stay in Delray. And I think to preserve that, we have to be thinking about how we invest in the long-term sustainability. And so I want to be working to accelerate our investments in infrastructure, two in particular. One, around broadband, and so making sure that all of our businesses have the opportunity and the supports they need to have reliable access and service, but also to digitize their operations so that you're able to reach a broader audience and bring more people into that experience. The second important piece of that infrastructure investment is around flooding. And how do we make sure that we're accelerating our timeline for our big capital improvement projects? So that we don't have to look down the road and cancel an event because it's going to rain and we're worried about whether or not we're going to be able to still have that go on because of the flooding pressures that affect not only residents but businesses. And so for me, it's really going to be working hard and working with each of you to figure out how we accelerate the investments in the long-term sustainability and the foundation that all of these great events and businesses are built upon.
Fantastic. Thank you. Love when you guys don't run out the timer. And Bill Rosello, what is your favorite Delray business and what would be your first priority in helping small businesses in Delray if you were elected to city council?
Well, I've got a few, but Kaizen for sure. Great bar, great food and Evening Star. We, we've been going to Evening Star since it opened in the nineties, so that's an old favorite. And same with St. Elmo's, have been going there for just so long and now the current owner, owners Larry and Christine. Christine actually worked in my, the business unit I ran in a, in a big firm and for, for several years. So she's one of my peeps. So I can't, I can't leave her out. So in, in terms of how I would help the businesses in Delray, I think, you know, one of the biggest issues that they have is attracting workers and then retaining them. And it's becoming less affordable for people, particularly in those hourly wage jobs. So we've got to address workforce housing going forward. And if it's not housing, it's transportation. How do we get the workers to Delray to, to work for the shopkeepers and the restaurants? So that's, that's key. I agreed with one of the candidates who said about the rescue funding. There's been a lot of PPP funding that came out from the federal government. A lot went to organizations that didn't need the money in the end. So want to make sure that we have a really good process to make sure that it's the businesses that have really been hurt, not the ones who have actually survived or even thrived through COVID. Third, and this I think helps all small businesses around the city, but we need to attract more large businesses. You know, we had a company called Grant Thornton here who just left and went to Roslyn. My son works there, so I know, and I had friends who worked there. But those anchor businesses help all the small businesses in two ways. Their people actually then are patronized, they're smaller businesses. And it also helps relieve the tax burden on our commercial sector, which is mostly small businesses. And finally, more events. I love fun. Delray is a fun place. We used to call Alexandria the fun side of the Potomac. Delray epitomizes that. So I'd like to see if we can come up with more ideas for events and festivals that bring people not only from all parts of Alexandria, but also from all parts of the metro area and the region.
Thank you so much, Bill. And James Lewis, what is your favorite Delray business and what would be your first priority in helping Delray small businesses if you were elected to city council?
Yeah, I mean, it's absolutely hard to choose between, you know, cheese tea, sushi bar, but I actually think I'm going to go with Evening Star. That was when I first moved to Alexandria. The first place I sort of went in Delray 10 years ago, a friend invited me over there and it's a place I like to take people because I think it's sort of a little off the beaten path and not your traditional Delray. So Evening Star. For me, I think the priorities are twofold, unfortunately, as not just one, but starting off with tourism, people are going to want to get out of their homes after being cooped up for a year. We need to make sure they're coming to Delray and that they're spending their money here. Visit Alexandria's return on investment for the city is six to one. And that's just the tax revenue. That's not talking about the commercial benefits or the jobs that are created by people. So if we want to goose our economy and support our businesses that have really struggled over the last year and a half, we absolutely need to make investments in tourism and make sure that Alexandria and Delray are at the top of people's list when they're going out and do, when they're going out and taking their family on vacation. And second, we have to solve the flooding problem. This is a huge issue across the city, but it's really being felt in Delray. We have the American Rescue Funds coming in, but honestly, we can't wait for Uncle Sam to bail us out every time. We absolutely need a plan for this and what we need to do is focus on the high-impact capacity projects. Because we can do all the maintenance we want, but if every time the last foot of that pipe gets blown out because there's too much water going in it, we're just throwing good money after bad. So we have to make the hard choices. We need to invest in the capital projects at the upper end that are going to have that biggest impact and that's hard. It's difficult. It involves tearing up streets. But that's the, that's where we need to be to make sure that we have the 21st century infrastructure that's designed to meet our needs. And in doing this process, it also gives us the ability to address broadband. I'm going to drop in the chat the link to my flooding plan if folks want to look at that more in depth.
Fantastic. Thank you. Sarah Bagley, what is your favorite Delray business and what would be your first priority for Delray small businesses if elected to city council?
Okay, so this, it's interesting. We got a St. Elmo's in my hood now, so I'm gonna, I get to like, mention it, but not name it as my favorite Delray business because I've got one in North Old Town now and I love it. So two things come to mind. Delray has actually been a wonderful partner in my campaign. We partnered with Neighborhood Provisions to do a wine and cheese event and they've been a fabulous partner for us. And so Pickup was at Evening Star. And so I have a fond association with them. And then I gotta echo Aliyah a little bit. Mind the Mat. We, on this weekend, I started my birthday at 8:00 AM in Ben Brennan Park with Sarah Vandergoet doing some yoga and it was, it was really key. And it was a beautiful way to sort of see so many great things about our city, right? I mean, it's a local Delray business and then being in one of our great parks and experiencing that. So and I wanted to mention that as well because I think what's going to be key in our recovery from this pandemic and honestly, preparing for whatever's to come is a recognition that it's not all restaurants, right? I mean, I'm with you guys. I think the, the curbside pickup, the alcohol changes, all those things. But Delray has music shops, it has salons, it has, you know, yoga studios and other wellness centers. They can't, you know, they can't do curbside pickup. You know, you can't get, you can't learn the piano, you know, outside in the street. And so we need to be conscious of really flexible solutions that are aware of the different types of businesses and the different solutions that are necessary and that we're prepared the next time this comes around, if a small business like Mind the Mat needs quick access to open spaces, let's make that permitting super easy. If a music store needs to keep giving children's lessons and their spaces are too small, let's make city spaces available to them so that they can keep functioning if there's larger, safer spaces to do that. So, you know, I think we need to be conscious as we move out of this and as we prepare for whatever the future might hold, that each business needs flexibility of their own to tell us, look, my, my challenge is payroll. My challenge is inventory. Mine is rent relief. And so we need to, you know, develop our programming with that in mind and realize not everybody can get on the curb and sell their product. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Kirk McPike, what is your favorite Delray business? Like I said, it's not a fair question.
So the first restaurant I ever ate in Alexandria was Evening Star. And the two restaurants I've probably eaten in the most are Pork Barrel and Los Tios. But they've all been mentioned, so I'd like to give some attention and love to Let's Meet on the Avenue, the amazing butcher shop in Delray, where my husband is the cantor at Bethel Hebrew Congregation. So when I need a brisket for Passover or a turkey for Thanksgiving or Christmas, that is where I go to Let's Meet on the Avenue. And even during the pandemic, they've been open and accessible and we've been well-fed thanks to them. So, and just one of, you know, so many great places to go in Delray. And I think that's sort of what we need to focus on when we're talking about how we help Delray recover from the pandemic. First, we need to communicate with the folks who run businesses there and find out from y'all, what has worked well during the pandemic? What didn't work as well, but probably could be tried again in a different way? What do we need to keep? You know, if that's the curbside delivery, if that's alcohol to go. I want to make sure that we're making it possible for our businesses that have survived this pandemic on narrow margins and declining revenues have the space and flexibility they need to fully recover from this past year. I also want to make sure that as we're looking to bring new businesses into the city, we look at the businesses that have done well. And what is, what was it about them that made them durable? And how can we make it easier to create those kinds of businesses in Delray and across our city? And as folks have said, folks around this region are going to be so excited to get out of their houses and go to, you know, restaurants, go to stores over the next few months. And I want to make sure that as many of them as possible come to Delray over the rest of this year and for years to come. And I think that working with Visit Alexandria to make sure that we are properly advertising ourselves regionally, not just seeking hotel revenue dollars, but also just people coming in and spending money. I also want to see if we can use some of this money coming down from the federal government, you know, I also want to see if we can use some of this money coming down from the federal government, you know, the rescue plan and also the infrastructure plan, not only to deal with issues like flooding and broadband, but to see if we can pre-fund some business interest, some business improvement districts in the city to help create a sustainable infrastructure for that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Kirk. Patrick Moran, what is your favorite Delray business? And what would be your first priority in helping Delray businesses should you be elected to city council?
Hillary, it depends on the day, if, and the time of day, if it's in the morning, it's St. Elmo's. If it's for brunch, it's Stomping Ground. If it's for lunch, probably Pork Barrel. And if it's dinner casual, it's DRP. If it's a little fancier, then it's Evening Star. But there's a ton of great businesses and they all operate as an ecosystem. I mean, as a credit to the RBA. And so it's fabulous. And I'm going to speak a little bit to that ecosystem because I'm hearing a lot of great ideas, all of which will be incredibly supportive for our business community, which I'm excited about. But, you know, I tell you, we got a lot of students who are going to be playing catch up this in the coming years. And I think that there's a great opportunity to collaboratively set up internships and workforce development. I mean, just think about that. So, you know, as we're going through summers and understanding that there's curriculums that need to be made up, an opportunity for ACPS to design a specialty curriculum that set up the ability for young people to, into a role, earn practical skills, small business skills. Those are things that are going to be great on a resume. Those are things that would be enormously helpful for us. And then also understanding that the educational component for that potentially gives some flexibility in terms of compensation, which is going to be something that I know is also with increased cost of living, it's also a challenge. We also need to ensure that we're investing in the things proactively that have been mentioned. I mean, the infrastructure, you know, broadband is going to be huge. I mean, our, our stormwater and sanitary sewer infrastructure needs to get squared away. And then there's going to be increased opportunities for stimulus for the tourist industry. We got to make sure that doesn't all go to Old Town. We got to make sure Delray gets a piece of it, but done so collaboratively so we can ensure that we get the biggest bang for our buck.
Perfect. Thank you. Maroon, what is your favorite Delray business? And what would be your priority in helping small businesses in Delray if you were elected to city council?
Yes, thank you for the question. My favorite, and I'm going to stick with one for sake of time, but my favorite would be cheese steak. One, because I love grilled cheese and mac and cheese. So the fact that it's available together. And growing up in Northern Virginia, of course, it's been a staple across the region. So very much a big fan of cheese steak. And in terms of priorities, if elected on the council to support Delray small businesses, one, it's shop small, shop local. How do we encourage that post-pandemic will be critical and three main things. And some of them are ideas already touched on by some of the candidates and some new ideas. First would be funding, right? Utilizing some of the funding from the American Rescue Plan to help support our small businesses will be critical, whether it's small business loans, whether it's supporting infrastructure, as was mentioned. The second would be incentives. How do we get folks to shop local? How can we partner with Visit Alexandria to help provide new programming and initiatives? Whether that's on social media, whether that's having a punch card, you know, what have you. New initiatives to help encourage more customers into our doors. The last would be a focus on technology. So coming from a tech background, I really do believe it'll be important to help ensure that our local businesses are competitive with the new Uber Eats, DoorDash, Grubhub applications. We've seen in the pandemic, curbside dining be successful and thrive. How can we encourage convenience for folks where they are and wherever they'd like to dine? So I'd love to see us to continue in offering those. And then outside of our restaurants, right, our shops or our other small businesses, how can we compete in an e-commerce market where folks may not be coming in person to your shops? How can the city help support our Delray small businesses in competing in that? And that includes investing in broadband infrastructure, which is already mentioned, but private sector partnerships with these new mobile apps and what have you that are coming out and really taking a piece of the market. So I would certainly have that perspective if elected on the council. And of course, shopping local is one of my priorities as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And last but not least, Bill Campbell, what is your favorite Delray business? And what would be your first priority in serving on city council if elected for Delray businesses?
Oh my God, this is so easy for me. And I'm probably not even, not even have the right name. And I call it the Delray Hardware Store. It, it reminds me so much, and I don't like to compete and campaign about who was the poorest growing up or what have you. But I grew up in West Virginia and there was a store called Chicks. And in addition to distributing government cheese and milk, it sold everything from candy to clothes to washing machines. And it just, and so that hardware store in Delray, it has never failed to provide me what I needed. And so I go there all of the time. I even shop there sometimes. I'm like, oh, I needed that. I need, they have so many things there. But in terms of businesses and what city council needs to do, I think there's a couple of things. One, we still need to remember that pandemic is here. We need to be clear on the guidance that we're providing the businesses. Things are moving very quickly. And so the city council needs to make sure that we're out in front on that. Clearly, we need to make sure that we have clear and consistent and equitable guidance on any funds that arrive and need to be distributed. And then, you know, being retired, I'm hoping to be that council person that can over-communicate to folks on city council. So I want to go out and talk to the business owners and stuff and ask, what do you need? I was talking with the owner of Monterey's and he said they're being killed by delivery services. So is there something in our ordinances and policies that we can do about that? And so, you know, there are, there are so many things that we, but I think the initial focus has to be on consistent message, how we communicate around COVID and then distribution. And then asking business owners, what can we do for you? And then how can we get the hell out of your way so that you can, can, can run your business?
Fantastic. Thank you, Bill. I do love the hardware store. Especially when I've locked myself out of the house and they come to my rescue. Alrighty, we are just about ready to wrap up. I would like to give the candidates an opportunity for some closing statements. You'll have about 15 to 30 seconds. And I guess you know the last hurrah of why we should vote you onto city council. I'm going to go back up the way I started. So Bill, you are actually going to get the first chance to give your closing statement.
Awesome. No problem. You know, for me, city council and for businesses, it's not just a focus on business. It has to be a focus on the entire city. The better we make our schools, the more popular we, we make our attractions, the better our housing affordability is that we can bring folks to this city. It's going to help everyone. I think if you take a look at my experience working on the school board, working on the early education commission, I've been on numerous boards and commissions around development planning. And I, so I think my knowledge of this city, I've worked with city council, I've worked with the city manager, I've worked with superintendent. And I think that's what you want. You want to make sure that folks have the technical background and the knowledge to properly make decisions. And that's what I would bring to council.
Thank you. Maroon?
Yes, thank you again to the Delray Business Association for hosting this forum. My closing remarks, I would just leave you with a few different perspectives. One is that this is a critical time coming out of the pandemic to support our local economy. And our small business economy is a big part of that. So ensuring that we have the adequate support, whether that's funding as well as incentives for our residents to come out and shop local. In addition to revitalizing our tourism economy, it will be critical for the council to prioritize this in 2022 and beyond. And I would love to help champion bringing a data-driven and technology perspective to that and helping us adapt and bring us into the 21st century with new business models and approaches to support our small businesses in Alexandria. So I hope to earn your support for the June 8th primary. My website is www.maronforcouncil.com. And thank you again for hosting this forum.
Thank you so much. Patrick?
Thank you, Hillary. This has just been fabulous. In closing, I'm, my campaign is, and you might see it at the bottom of our signs. It says, a bold mission to make Alexandria the best small city in the world. If I didn't grow up in, in Delray, I do not think that that would be the basis in which I was trying to ensure that all of Alexandria experienced that. But it's really reflective of the broad commitment of our business community, our organizations and our community leaders. You walk Mount Vernon Avenue or any of the side streets and you feel the generosity. Jen Walker has been fabulous. Bill Blackburn has been fabulous. The work of all of you, Lauren Fisher with the Wellness District. I appreciate you. I'm grateful. Thank you for doing what you're doing. I look forward to talking more.
Thank you so much, Patrick. Kirk?
Thank you. My job in Congress is simple but complicated. I help my boss listen to the businesses and residents of his district and experts on policy matters and take that input to craft real solutions to problems people have. And I want to take that experience and put it to work doing the same thing here in Alexandria City Council. I have the support of Adam Evan, Jacinta Green, former mayors Bill Yule, Carrie Donnelly, because they see that I'm someone who can do this. But the real support I would like is yours, your endorsement and your vote. And I hope you'll consider me on June 8th and you can learn more about me at kirkmcpipe.com. Thank you.
Perfect. Bill Rosello had to leave. Sarah Bagley?
Thank you, everyone. I want to thank the community again for putting this on. And so many members of the Delray business community who I mentioned have supported the campaign and have also just helped inform my understanding of business needs in, in that part of town. I really appreciate that. And it's, it's how I intend to do the job if I were on council. You know, to come to those places, to talk to you, to, to listen, to find the leaders in the community. And that's what organizations like this are so good at. What I have tried to do in this campaign repeatedly is draw together the issues that, that are paramount in Alexandria. And Delray brings so many of those to a head. Our schools need rehabilitation. Our sewage and stormwater capacity issues are felt deeply in Delray and in Rosemont and surrounding areas. Our safe streets issues, I'm sure all of us have had close calls, you know, walking around in Delray and on Mount Vernon. And so I've tried to bring all these issues together, environmental concerns and how we build and develop. And so I hope to bring that voice and listen to yours should I be on city council. And I thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much, Sarah. James?
Thank you again so much to the Delray Business Association. The main reason I'm running in my background in the city is in infrastructure. We have no shortage of challenges. They're coming to the head in Delray for real. And that's the experience I'd like to bring of working with the business community, with residents, with city staff to find the win-win-win that benefits everybody and moves us forward, not just for today, but into the 21st century. I'm glad to have the support of Sheriff Dana Lawhorn, a longtime lifelong Delray resident and Mayor Carrie Donnelly. I've worked with both of them on infrastructure and transportation issues in the city. That's why I have their support because they know I can do this. And I hope to bring that to, to the table and I hope to earn your vote on June. Thank you.
Thank you so much, James. And last but not least, Amy?
Yes, thank you again for having us today. And I really appreciate you all for always supporting your own. And of course, if you don't know me, you knew I was a community activist and advocate way before being encouraged to be on council for this first term. So I would appreciate going forward, your vote, so I can continue to advocate for you on the city council. And we will be using the funds to, of course, help our businesses attract our tourists as well as our own hometown visitors. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy. And thank you to all of the candidates.